I would suggest that the Clerk Cook conduct a roll call vote and after a quorum is established pursuant to Section 3.1-35-35 of the Illinois Municipal Code, you elect one of your members to serve as the temporary chairman of this meeting, to preside over the meeting. I know historically, I'm told, that you've had the longest-serving alderman serve in that position. It's my understanding that Alderman Seibert and Alderman Musgrove have declined to do so, which would leave as the next longest-serving alderman, Dr. Sillsby, who served in that capacity in the meeting that the mayor was absent due to his mother's illness. So, that being said, if Clerk Cook would call the roll. Thank you.
Alderman Hazel.
Here.
Alderman Consilla.
Here.
Alderman Pusa.
Here.
Alderman Bittner.
Here.
Alderman Randall.
Here.
Alderman Tyler.
Here.
Alderman Anthony.
Here.
Alderman Ovian.
Here.
Alderman Sillsby.
Here.
Alderman Diddleman.
Here.
Alderman Seibert.
Here.
Alderman White.
Here.
Alderman Galetti.
Here.
Alderman Elmore.
Here.
Alderman Wiggington.
Here.
Alderman Musgrove.
Here.
Mr. Clerk.
Yes, sir.
I make a motion that we appoint Dr. Sillsby as the chairman of tonight's board meeting.
Second.
Second by Alderman Consilla. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Dr. Sillsby?
Okay, we'll do a roll call of department heads.
City Treasurer Hart.
Here.
City Attorney Horner.
Here.
Police Chief Clay.
Fire Chief Poor.
Ken Vaughn.
Royce Carlisle.
Jamie Matron.
Tim Gregowitz.
Jim Schneider.
Leander Spearman.
Nissa McCaskill.
Chuck Schaefer.
Debbie Belleville.
Bob Sabo.
Here.
Mike's here for Chuck. Mike Parks.
All right, if everyone will please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. [inaudible] There is no public hearing tonight, and before we go into public participation, encourage everyone that the rules and of conduct are contained in the agenda, the back of the agenda, encourage you to follow those. And then when you step up to speak, please state your name and your address, and please keep your comments to two to three minutes on the agenda, our city business. Make sure you speak into the microphone because these are being taped. We are now open for public participation. Yes, ma'am?
Two negative, Lilly and Schneider, 219 Kansas Avenue. All sewer and trash bills paid with no six water shut-off notices. My speaking tonight is on the Belleville property tax break, for Belleville property tax bill, increased by seventy dollars for every hundred thousand dollars. There was no real facts of the count of veterans qualified for this tax break, or did the paper not print all the facts? And what has me concerned is the mayor's comment, and I will read it word for word. Mayor Mark Eckert said the main reason for the drop in the assessed valuation was due to the new property tax breaks granted by the state to be to disabled veterans. So, it's more or less saying it's the disabled veterans' fault. No, it's not. When the mayor doesn't make a comment, when the mayor makes a comment like that about all the corporations and businesses that get large property tax breaks, and our sales tax is one of the largest in the area, does he sit there and blame them for having us having the largest sales tax and all the tax breaks they get? And we're one of the largest in the area? For these businesses to receive a portion of this tax, high tax that we have of nine point one? The comment about the veterans by the mayor, does he expect them now to shop in Belleville? It was one of the most rudest comments, just like the one about Ben Franklin or Mr. Conkright not being able to please him. Veterans, please accept my apology. Thank you for your service you have gave to our country. Please tell all other veterans that not everyone in Belleville is that rude. Also in the article, Elmore is concerned about not having police officers included in the new budget. Where was Elmore when he wasn't an alderman? Why wasn't he speaking then? And the next thing, our month is up. I don't know how many of yous will even acknowledge how you were laughing at that meeting on Wednesday night before the great big press conference. Well, how many of yous are laughing now? Where is our new hotel? The month is up.
Mr. Hagberg.
I also want to comment on the tax levy. Last December, when the tax levy was presented to this council, Jamie Matron stated that it would have a modest increase of eight dollars and seventy-three cents on a hundred thousand dollar home. Please accept my apologies for making comments that I thought the increase would be between thirty-two and forty dollars. I was wrong. Now that the rates have been certified, the Belleville taxes for the hundred thousand dollar home just for the Belleville portion is seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars, an increase of seventy dollars and twenty-one cents, not the eight dollars and seventy-three cents that was previously reported. In a BND article, Mayor Eckert blamed the tax increase on the state allowing disabled veterans additional property tax exemptions. I myself do not believe that these exemptions had much of an effect on that seventy-dollar increase. When I get the actual figures, I'll return to this council and show you the actual dollar amount of that seventy dollars that can be attributed to our veterans getting an exemption on their property taxes. Next subject is, I notice that we're making all the TIF rebates this pay period. You'll notice the claims are a little over eight million dollars. One of the items I've spoken about in the past has been TIF-10, and I noticed that they are making a payment for the taxes collected in tax year 2014. I have no record, and it seems like with the fund balance in there that there was never a payment made for the tax year 2013. And maybe somebody could look into it and find out if that payment was skipped, or if there was a reason why it was skipped. Thank you.
Stewart Leonard, 318 South 29th Street, Belleville. As far as these public participation rules, I think only Rule B and E should be applicable. The rest of it's just a bunch of nonsense. And Lin and Wood pays no property tax. Belleville pays Lin and Wood a hundred and fifty thousand a year. We can now thank a vet for our taxes going up. We just had another dead person, about thirty-four years old, from an overdose, and there was not a peep in the paper about that. And the NGA never ever had a...
Stewart, please keep your comments to this meeting.
They never even considered that cornfield out there. To them, that was a pristine green space, and to the St. Clair leaders, that was just a blighted area, but they are not in tune with the green revolution that's taking place. Thank you.
Anyone else to address this council? If not, I will close public participation, and we'll move on to presentations, recognition, and appointments. I believe we have some students from Altoff and Bellevue West here to make a presentation on the character word of the month, so if you will, please come forward.
Hi, my name is Emily Brunick. I'm a sophomore at Altoff Catholic High School. I'm a member of the Belleville Youth Board, and I'm here to share the word of the month. The word is cooperation, and it's working together in a peaceful way. And we show this every month when we meet together with East and West. It's pretty amazing that like three, the students from the three high schools can all come together and work and do good for this city. I'm guessing West didn't show up today.
Well, you did a great job. We thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, it's my privilege now, if Chase Biddle will come forward, I would have a presentation for him.
It is a great honor for me to be able to present this on behalf of the mayor of the city council, having been an educator and former principal, that is really a highlight when you can recognize students. And this is a young man who achieved a goal, and probably one of the highest goals you can achieve in athletics, because he was a state champion in wrestling. That is outstanding, and we want to recognize him tonight. I have a certificate of recognition presented to Chase Biddle, in recognition of your achievement as the 2016 Illinois High School Association State Wrestling Champion. Your hard work and dedication to reach your goals serves as an inspiration to all. The city of Belleville is proud of your accomplishments and wishes you all the best in future endeavors. Congratulations, Mark W. Eckert, mayor of the city of Belleville. We congratulate you, and we give you a challenge. We want to see you back here next year. Thank you. [applause] That's kind of what we see all the time. Good things going on, positive. We have another positive thing tonight. I have to do a proclamation, and we're going to make a proclamation to, if these people will please come forward, Sanita Dunn, from the Operation AmeriCorps program director, Abu Yousani, from the Bellevue AmeriCorps program director, and Tony Muhammad, the SWCC Belleville RSVP and plus program director, national service recognition. So, we have a... Or anybody else would like to come up, that's fine. I have this proclamation, and I'll read it to you, and I want to thank you for your hard work and your volunteers and everything that you do. It says, "Whereas service to others is the hallmark of American character and central to how we meet our challenges, and whereas the nation's mayors are increasingly turning to national service and volunteerism as a cost-effective strategy to meet city needs, and whereas AmeriCorps, AmeriCorps Vista and Senior Corps participation address the most pressing challenges facing our communities, from educating students for the jobs of the 21st century, and supporting veterans and military families to provide health services, and helping communities recover from natural disasters, and whereas AmeriCorps Vista has initiated a program called East Side Works, which will ultimately enable students from throughout the region to become better prepared for the workforce, while providing employers with an opportunity to direct student preparation, and whereas national service expands economic opportunity by creating more sustainable, resilient communities, and providing education, career skills, leadership abilities for those who serve. And whereas AmeriCorps, AmeriCorps Vista and Senior Corps participants serve in more than 50,000 locations throughout the country, fostering the civic, neighborhood, and faith-based organizations that are so vital to our economic and social well-being. And whereas national service participants increase the impact of the organization they serve, both through their direct service and by managing millions of additional volunteers. And whereas national service represents a unique private-public partnership that invests in community solutions and leverages non-federal resources to strengthen community impact and increase the return on tax dollars, whereas national service participants demonstrate commitment, dedication, and patriotism by making intense commitment to service, commitment that remains with them in their future endeavors. And whereas Corporation for National and Community Service shares a priority with county officials, mayors nationwide to engage citizens and provide strength in communities, and is joining with the National League of Cities, National Association of County, City of Service, and mayors and county officials across the country for the mayor and county recognition for National Day of Service on April 5, 2016. Therefore, it be resolved that Mark W. Eckert, mayor of the city of Belleville, do hereby proclaim April 5, 2016 as National Service Recognition Day, and encourage residents to recognize the positive impact of national service in our city, to thank those who serve, and to find ways to give back to their communities. Congratulations for your work. You are leaders, and we thank you for leading in our community." [applause]
Motion by Alderman Wiggington. Do I have a second? Alderman White, second. Any additions or corrections? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have claims, payroll, and disbursements. Motion to approve claims and disbursements in the amount of eight million four hundred and twenty-five thousand one hundred and thirty-eight dollars and eighteen cents, and payroll in the amount of eight hundred and twenty-six thousand five hundred and fifteen seventeen. Motion by Alderman Anthony. Second by Alderman Diddleman. Any questions? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Diddleman.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Motion carries. We have no reports, oral reports from the standing committees. We have motions from the zoning board of appeals. Alderman Seibert.
I'd like to have residents as a group...
Do we have any? Yes.
I would like to separate A1, 12A1. Just have some comments on that.
Okay, any others?
I was going to want it to be read by title only as well, if possible. 12A7.
Pardon me?
Separate 12A7.
You have an objection to reading by title only?
Yeah, to read by title only.
Okay, I need a motion to read by title only, and as a group?
We'll just do the first one first. We'll just go with the first, and then we'll...
We have a motion and a second. Alderman Seibert. Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. We'll do 12A1 first.
12A1, case six, March 16, Diamond Shell Incorporated Doing Business as the Edge.
Do we have a motion? Alderman Diddleman, second. Alderman Consilla, discussion? Yes, sir.
First off, Mr. Diamond, I have nothing against your proposal. I am a big backer of your business. I want to see you expand. This is an issue regarding number two in the request, and the lighting issue. There are currently questions as far as how we are going to be able to enforce the lighting issues. I have asked that lighting be placed on the housing committee meeting on Wednesday before I would vote in favor of any restrictions placed on business, or to give the residents a false sense of security regarding lighting and its intrusion on their property. I would ask that this particular item be tabled until after the meeting on Wednesday, so that all parties will be able to discuss the issues that are currently going on with lighting, and that in the future, any issues regarding lighting and the intrusion on private property, that everybody involved would know where they stand, and what is expected of them, and what can be done. We are currently experiencing issues regarding lighting on South 29th Street, West A and West Main Street, which have not been resolved. So, my motion right now is to table this, if I can make that motion.
We have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. That is in our ward. We've spent a lot of time talking with the Edge and various constituents, and I know that lighting is a concern, but we're in favor of this moving forward. As the alderman. Alderman Diddleman.
They've already put a new parking lot in within the last year, and they've had no lighting issues from that parking lot, or any other parking lot that they've had. They also went, before they got this variance here, they went around to the neighborhood, and they got all their neighbors to come in and talk about this, and everybody was, they were pro for the whole outfit here, the whole deal. So, this has been discussed in committee meetings, when they actually took it to the zoning board, and nobody seemed to have a problem. The neighbor said the zoning board didn't...
Alderman White.
Thank you, Chairman. I somewhat concur with what Mr. Bittner is saying, but on the other hand, if this is, if the concern is being taken to another committee such as a housing down the road, wouldn't that, if that, if the ordinance does change, wouldn't that be affecting something that already exists? I mean, I can't see holding this one item for something that might be changed in the future.
If there's going to be an ordinance change in the future, of course, you know, that would impact the code, but as far as what is being proposed now, this is a, you know, zoning action that would remain in effect with the property.
So, it would not be changed?
Correct.
Okay.
Alderman Consilla.
I'd like to point out that we are not without an ordinance for lighting. We have an ordinance for lighting, and this would be required to fulfill the requirements of the ordinance as it is.
Alderman Bittner.
The problem that we're experiencing is that the lighting ordinance is not, in my opinion, being enforced on certain companies, certain entities within the city, and it is directly affecting residents, and nothing is being done. So, that's why I brought, I want to bring it back to the committee.
Alderman Wiggington.
I have a concern here. Are we setting a precedent for every sporting event that goes on into the evening that has lights? Anybody that is open on later hours, or wants to secure their properties with lights? I can see us setting this wrong tone here, and possibly setting a precedent for future development, and again, I think athletic events.
Right. And one of those issues, the lighting issue's been there since 1940, and people knew that when they moved into the area, and they've worked through it, and the schools have worked with them in the best that they can at that point.
I just want to relay a personal situation. When the historical society purchased the old Barnes funeral, which is next door to my property, the night light shines into my bedroom. It shines into my bedroom, but I don't have a problem with it, because I look over and make sure that their property is not being intruded upon. And I can convey to Larry Betts if there's a problem and call 911. So, it's not always a negative situation. Lighting is important today for us for safety.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wasn't at the zoning board meeting, but did I hear Alderman Diddleman correct that there were no objections to the zoning request?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to delay or to postpone this zoning board of appeal case. Tabled to the next meeting. We'll do a roll call vote.
Hazel.
No.
Consilla.
No.
Pusa.
No.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
No.
Tyler.
No.
Anthony.
No.
Ovian.
No.
Sillsby.
No.
Diddleman.
No.
Seibert.
No.
White.
No.
Galetti.
No.
Elmore.
No.
Wiggington.
No.
Musgrove.
Okay, motion defeated. Next, we have the motion to approve 12A1, which is the Diamond Shell, the Edge situation. Do I have a motion? Or do we have a motion already?
No, we do not.
We have a motion from Alderman Diddleman, second by me.
Okay. Any other comments? Roll call.
Hazel.
Excuse me. I think that was for title only, I'm sorry.
Yeah, because Alderman Bittner jumped in first, I think.
Okay, now we're gonna have to... You want to make the motion?
I will make that motion.
I was gonna accept it anyway.
Second, Alderman Diddleman. Okay, now we have a motion for Alderman Consilla and Alderman Diddleman for the approval of the Edge request. Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Diddleman.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, we can do A2, A3, A4, A5, and A6. A8 and A9, correct?
Yes, we just need one more motion for that.
Okay, we need a motion for title only. Alderman Seibert, second by Alderman White, to read by title only, all those, and as a group?
I have a question on A8.
It's okay, we're not getting there yet. We're just gonna do two through six.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
12A2, case number seven, March of 16, Maxwell Price. 12A3, case eight, March of 16, Julie Laswell-Darnell. 12A4, case nine, March 16, A MRB Development LLC. 12A5, case nine, March of 16, B MRB Development LLC. 12A6, case 10, March 16, Special Education Services. And 12A7, we'll hold off.
Need a motion to approve those? Alderman Seibert, second by Alderman Wiggington. Any discussion? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye. Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Diddleman.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Okay, next we'll do a motion to read by title only, A7. We'll just do A7, since they're gonna be by themselves. A7. Motion by Alderman Hazel. Alderman White, second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
12A7, case 11, March of 16, Green Forest Vapor Shop.
Motion to approve? Alderman White, second by Alderman Seibert. Discussion. Alderman White, second by Alderman Anthony. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
12A8, case 12, March of 16, Joanne Bumpers.
Motion to approve? Alderman Anthony, second by Alderman Wiggington. Discussion? Yes, sir.
I'd like to know what the hours of operation are gonna be, and how many days a week, and how many years of service, and the final question is, how many stalls will be maintained? Joanne Bumpers, operation hours are nine to six in the afternoon, five days, six days a week. That's Monday through Saturday? No, Tuesday to Saturday. Okay. And how many years of experience have you had? Twenty. Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
how many years of service. And the final question is, how many stalls will be maintained?
Joanne Bumpers' operation hours are nine to six in the afternoon, five days, six days a week.
That's Monday through Saturday?
No, Tuesday to Saturday.
Okay.
Yeah.
And how many years of experience have you had?
Twenty.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Before we move on, I would like to say to thank Dallas for putting the recommendation of the zoning board right underneath and concise. That, that made it so easy, didn't have to flip back and forth, so thank you for doing that. Next will be motions from the wastewater division. A motion to scrap a nineteen ninety-one Chevy S-ten pickup with a hundred and seven thousand, five hundred and two miles and a nineteen ninety-eight Ford pickup dunked with a hundred and forty-two thousand, eight, eighty-five miles after the fire department uses the vehicles for extrication practice. Motion by Alderman Elmore, second by Alderman Seibert. Any discussion? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, a motion from the police department. Motion to scrap a two thousand and one Ford Crown Vic with a hundred and twenty thousand, one hundred and three miles, a two thousand and three Ford Crown Vic with a hundred and twenty-nine thousand, sixty-seven miles, and a nineteen ninety-two Chevrolet Caprice with ninety-eight thousand, five hundred and sixty-two miles after the fire department uses the vehicles for extrication practice. Alderman Elmore makes a motion, second by Alderman Wiggington. Discussion. Yes, sir.
I would like to find out if we have any donation possibilities on the oh-three, on the oh-one Crown Vics. I don't remember. Chief, I don't remember that coming up in the police department.
The oh-one and the oh-three Crown Vics, do we have any donation opportunities on those vehicles?
No, we've not had anybody ask for those. What we do sometimes is if SWIC can use them or something like that, depending on what the damage is to the vehicle, we allow for that. But most of the time, the vehicles are so, so worn that we would not give those vehicles to anybody. They need to be scrapped.
Sometimes our ordinance is different perception than another department's idea of war. That's why I asked.
Yeah, I understand.
Did we have further discussion about these in police department?
I'm not sure that we did.
Is it just being brought to this committee?
Yeah, it's being brought to the council. This is not really a gray issue whatsoever. These vehicles are scrapped and they really need to go... We, we think the fire department will benefit from using them to, you know, train off. There's nothing that we're gonna do with them. Nothing. And we're not gonna transfer them to somebody else.
Do we have a motion?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, we need a motion to approve the First Amendment to Proposal Agreement between Wastewater Waste Management of Illinois, Inc., and the City of Belleville. Motion to approve. Alderman Dittelman, second by Alderman Kinsella. Discussion. Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Motion carries. We don't have any unfinished business.
Mr. Sillsby.
Yes, sir.
Under unfinished business, about a month or two ago, about a month ago, I asked the city attorney to contact Lindenwood University regarding the city council moving to Lindenwood and there are several individuals have been banned from the school property. Is there any movement on that? Have we gotten any communication?
That is a meeting that the mayor and I will have with them. We've discussed it and we're, the movement will not happen unless it is in writing. There'd be a written agreement that all the public will be able to attend.
Okay, and that'll be before?
Of course, yeah.
All right, a few other things.
Sure.
Regarding the parking plan with Lindenwood University, living within the area, who, it doesn't appear to me that this plan's being enforced, at least as far as the parking. The students are still not parking in the designated areas. They're all along the streets. It's been, the plan was submitted in February, it's April, and it doesn't appear to be any semblance of following what the plan says. That's one reason I asked that it be placed on the housing agenda Wednesday. I encourage all the aldermen to be at that meeting, to hear. There will be residents at that meeting. There are issues going on throughout the neighborhood. The plan's lacking, and I asked this of the mayor at the last meeting when the plan was submitted to us, the gravel, the gravel driveways behind the homes, there's nothing in the plan as far as when those will be paved. As far as the parking lots, the city was required when we did, redid a parking lot over behind, I believe it was on Church Street or, I forget, but we had to put green space in. There's nothing in the plan as far as green space on the parking lots. Once again, the lighting issues, there's lighting issues on West A, Twenty-Ninth Street and Main Street. It was a stipulation when we, when this council voted to give the special use permit that lighting would be addressed. There's nothing in the plan discussing lighting. Besides that, there are other issues going on with the students. Communication between Lindenwood and myself, there is no communication. I've had repeated requests of Dr. Wingo to address some issues with specific housing on West A, in particular, West, two thousand West A, two thousand seven West A, two thousand twenty-one West A. These are all issues. These are houses that do not follow the rules of the school and these are issues that need to be addressed. And so I encourage everyone on this council to be at the housing meeting. I also requested that the, on the police and fire, that the issue of security be addressed. It's my understanding that security for Lindenwood in the evenings, overnight, and on weekends are a couple students who answer the phone. So it appears to me that the Bellevue Police Department is the security for Lindenwood University in the evenings, at night, and on weekends. I had several opportunities to call Lindenwood Security at three-thirty in the morning, four o'clock in the morning, twelve-thirty in the morning over the last month. And there's been a lot of issues during March. It's been going on and myself and a lot of the residents on my street are getting tired of it. I want it addressed by this administration. When I ask who's gonna enforce this parking plan, I don't get an answer. I do want to give some, my thanks and to Lieutenant Iskant. When I call him, things get done. He takes care of issues and I want to give him, I want to commend him for the great job he's doing. I can't, when I call security at Lindenwood or Dr. Wingo, I get no answers and nothing gets done. And I think we need to start putting a little pressure and get these kids in line. So that's all I have to say on that. Thank you.
Any other unfinished business? New business miscellaneous and new business. We have motor fuel claims in the amount of ninety-nine thousand, three hundred and ninety fifty-three cents. Motion by Alderman Seibert, do I have a second? Alderman Ovian? Discussion. Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.